That we have twenty lights, streetlights on State Route seventy-nine in front of Mary Court. And I think eight of them, or they've said that they ate them, are working in twelve, aren't they? The streetlights, twenty, eight work, twelve don't.
Between Hopewell and the city limit, right?
Yes. And they were, there was an ODOT project on Wyden seventy-nine to the expressway to get on sixteen. And those lights were given to the city, they are not AUP lights, they're city lights. Our bucket truck come up, reached them, maintained that. So we had contacted AUP to see what they can do for us. And their suggestion is that we would have to purchase the lights to fix. And that means if we want to go to LED, we would have to purchase that, maybe through Holofane. There are some heads that are, that are broke on some of those lights. So we would have to purchase all that and have someone else install them. And then AUP said they would do, make this contract with us to keep them going while they change and stuff like that. So we're in the process of getting some prices for the, for the lights on State Route seventy-nine. The mayor thinks it's not real dark, but probably because the Matthews Ford and some of those places are right there now. So we're gonna look and see what it costs to fix them. I think Dave at one time thought maybe he could take all the guts and everything on those could be as much as ten thousand dollars. So we will be looking at, on those lights, Dave, was that, AUP just said they would maintain them?
If we would sign a contract agreeing that they would do the work, yes, they would. I mean, they would probably charge us, how much they would charge us.
That's just like the change in the light bulb.
Yeah, and if you go to LED, you're not gonna have to worry about that.
Question?
I got questions.
But that's just the.
Jeff has a question.
And I'll use the Duke and Duchess at Heath Road and seventy-nine. I think Mexico illuminated a streetlight or two, just from the commercial private lighting. Have we done an analysis of the lights, whether or not we actually need that many lights in that area of seventy-nine? Maybe we can get by with.
I mean, I would just guess that when they did that whitey project, that's what ODOT suggested. Which probably requirement for that, but I don't know how. I mean, that car dealership has always been there.
I understand.
But, but well, I mean, I don't know who put the criteria to how the, how many lights you need.
Are those metered? Flat rate, find that flat rate. It's flat, they, they charge a certain amount for the light, flat rate, and they add up all the lights to the city.
I know that's how they do on the ones they maintain, but now you're saying we have to maintain that separate? That's why I wondered.
On the lights, where our traffic lights are, that have the streetlights, that is run through the meter that runs the traffic lights.
But I mean, like, all the other lights in, in the city, take a residential street that has a streetlight on it. Do we maintain all them, or does AUP?
No, AUP does.
And we pay a flat rate for them? So what I'm saying is, can we get the same deal, let them fix the lights on there, and then let them do the maintenance at the flat rate? Might be cheaper in the long run than paying the money out to fix them and then have to have them.
Something tells me that AUP would probably want them operating before they signed a maintenance agreement to make sure that they're operating?
Well, I'm just saying like if we.
But moving forward, that's something that could be considered.
You know, if we have a residential street, someone requests a tra, a light, a streetlight, we put that, AUP puts it in, then they maintain it, we pay a fat rate.
Yeah.
But we don't pay upfront for, I don't think we pay upfront for the floor or anything like that, do we?
No.
Okay, so the same difference, act like there's no lights there, and only put ones in that we want, where we want them, and pay it cheaper if we let it go.
I see what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Act like there's no lights there.
Yeah.
And say, hey, we'd like a, you know, light here, here, and here.
Yeah. Well, I mean, there's, there's eight of them that work, I don't know which eight work right now.
Maybe the right eight.
See, that's something, see, and this is what I kind of talked about today with Bob. I don't know what lights work, I don't know what lights, what lights don't work. I've never noticed lights being out, I've never noticed lights being on. I mean, I just go, I drive, my headlights are on the road, away we go.
You know, I don't think it's that dark.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying too, is.
Why don't we do an analysis, what do we, maybe we've got, the ones that work, maybe we can move them in another spot and strategically light the place without spending tens of thousands of dollars.
Well, always before, we just, on the lights, I used to be on that committee and way back, first time, all down the county. We were, we eliminated a lot of it, we didn't need. So it's, it's not analysis, it's not providing light, it's just, you, customer come in, one of the neighbors comes in, crops have no streetlight. They can put one on to shut them up, or, you know, to satisfy them.
You better write first time, please. You better write first time.
Basically, that's how we work, if there's no, I don't think there's any elimination requirements.
There's no magic formula, but it's at least, it's an observation.
Yeah, I can't imagine ODOT having some minimum number, 'cause, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong. Didn't Newark turn out the street, uh, the, the, the lights on, on sixteen in some areas?
Save money for years.
Yeah, just didn't, just didn't have them on, so.
Well, I'm not saying they're requiring it now, but at that time, why did they put in twenty lights? I mean, what, what criteria did they use that? I'm sure there's some ODOT code of how many lights you need in a certain area, you know, and that's what they put in.
Rip and stuff out, why don't we just fix them and get the contract and move forward? Fix the lights and go do some.
Well.
What are you saying?
How much it costs?
Nobody's proposing that we do anything to it.
Because it works ten thousand dollars.
Lots of money.
How much are we gonna spend? We're just gonna sit there not working, or we're gonna just rip them out, what are we gonna do? Just leave the table there? I mean, I think there's a lot to be said about the way the city looks, and, you know, I got, I don't know, you guys think your light bulbs are brown, your house, but I changed mine, so. To me, you just leave these lights dangling around with not, not working, I don't know.
Well, we're, they're not set up for LED now, so we would have to, if we want to change that to LED, we would have to get all the guts for that and get asked.
What if we don't go to LED?
Well, we don't have to, but that's what almost everyone's going to now on the streetlights and everything, right?
You would save money over the time it would cost.
And there is some grant.
Especially Brian, in this particular case, because these lights are so high, that we can't get to them ourselves. So if we had, if we had an LED bulb that lasts a long.
Yeah, I don't know how long it would last, you know, but longer than that.
Then we just don't have to, if we have it in operation.
Why'd you do that?
Then we just don't have to worry about it, you know, for that long period of time.
That's weird.
I don't think, I don't think we can.
That's our energy saving program.
We could probably do it without two more burning in there.
Nobody's thought there was a bright light shining on the mayor's.
In the shadows.
Anything else on the. We'll get, that's the ballot. Nobody's sitting on that, we'll look at the lighting and see what, which ones work.
It'll turn back on.
Actually, we had a strobe lighting, yeah. You get the strobe.
Uh, Dave is, I brought Dave here tonight, 'cause we are on the capital improvement list. We do have a dump truck that the mayor has put in an area approved for this year. And I want to have Dave explain what kind of dump truck we were getting, what trucks we were thinking about trading in, and why. Go ahead, Dave.
What we got right now is a nineteen ninety-nine International tandem axle with a thirteen-foot bed. It has a dumping flow conveyor in it, which allows us to use a solder. And that's mainly the truck that we use going up and down seventy-nine. We also use it on Thirtieth Street, we use it on Airport Parkway. It goes in the additions, it's a little bit rougher to go in the additions, but we make do with what we can. I'm having trouble getting parts for it. It's starting to randomly break down nickel and diamond metal depth, basically is what it's starting to do. It's starting to show its age, and after a while, it, it gets a little harder for the parts and stuff to, to keep everything up. So we were looking into the process of possibly trading in the tandem for another tandem. And that way, we can use it for when we go berman. We've already got a berman box for the current tandem, we can reuse that, and just put the brackets on to have it installed, so that way, we aren't having a piece of machinery set around. But the only improvements we're looking at, we're looking at using an automatic transmission, which will save time, because this is a ten-speed. And, you know, you get a little tired of shifting gears, and the way the gear pattern is, sometimes you kind of forget what gear you're in, and that kind of screws you up.
How many miles are on this vehicle?
I believe this particular, particular truck has probably got, I don't know exactly, but I would say it's got anywhere between thirty-five to forty thousand miles.
When you say nickel and diamond, are you talking about stuff that's corroding because of rust and the salt, or are you talking about mechanical parts?
That's, that's a, that's a part of it. On the mechanical, I just had to replace a couple fuel lines, because, you know, it don't make any difference how much you wash and clean. The salt gets up in, and it just starts to rust away. I've got a valve set in the middle of the frame that actually runs all the hydraulics to it. And that valve, I've had to replace it three times, and this time, the solenoid that energizes that valve, I can't get it. I'm having really trouble, and the people that I've bought the truck from, and got the parts from, and got the previous valve before, they're telling me that the company that they get the valve from has never sold the solenoid that goes with the valve. Yeah, it don't make sense. So we're, we're having a little bit of trouble trying to get everything put together, so we can keep the thing operational. Right now, we took the magnet off of our hot box, which runs the gas valve to shut it on and off. We've got a magnet for that valve on the solenoid, because it's allowing it to work, so we can use the truck.
This is gas or diesel?
This, this is a diesel truck.
The thirty-five thousand miles is not a lot of miles on diesel.
No, no, I'm, I'm, granted, it's, it's, the truck, if you look at it diesel, it's not even broken in.
Right.
But it's led a hard life, 'cause mainly.
Hours, kind of hours on it there.
Hours, yeah, you know, because when we're, when we're berman, we're idling, not putting a lot of miles on it, but we're idling as we're working the machine on all the streets and stuff. And so you're adding the, the hours on the motor, you know, the wear and tear on it. We, we bought tires for it a couple of years ago. I'm, I'm debating whether we need to buy fronts on it yet or not, I don't, I'm hoping not to. I mean, you know, it, it's, it's in its prime to get the maximum amount of trade-in value out of the truck that you're probably gonna get.
Which is what in your estimation?
In my estimation, it's probably somewhere between twelve to fifteen thousand.
And a replacement's gonna be how much?
Around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Trade in, twelve to fifteen.
And, and that's just my guess, it, it might be higher than that.
I put, I put one thirty on my planning document.
Is this, is this an eBay possibility?
Anyway, I traded in.
Thirty-five thousand miles, eBay would be.
No, I've been on the.
I mean, anyway, I traded, give me prices on it, no way.
Say a new one.
That's me, council could do whatever they want. It'd make my job really easier to trade it in. If you trade it in, well, we got two different conversations going on.
It's gonna be new, you know, and, and, I mean, we do our own maintenance on it, we change the oil, we change the fuel filters, we grease them. We do ninety percent of the maintenance on the trucks, you know, that we can do. We just had a clutch put in it, I don't know, three years ago, and we can't do the clutch, because transmission's severe. So you gotta ship it out, well, there's an extra cost right there. But the automatic, shouldn't have that.
And Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the truck that we talked about, what, maybe six months ago or so? Where we said we got two trucks that are bad, one that needs to be replaced, one that we can replace the bed on. We replaced the bed on the one, this is dealing with the truck that needs replaced. That's the same truck, right?
But there is another truck too, right? That you're thinking about trading, not the one that we did the bed on, we're keeping that.
I know, I said, like I said, we had a conversation six months ago here. So we got two trucks that are bad, one that we can put a new bed on, and it'll be fine for us.
We've done that.
We've done that. I know, that's what I'm saying. This is the other truck of the two that was in that conversation. The one that was in such bad shape that we couldn't do the bed, right?
Yes, the other one.
That's the third?
That's the third.
And what, what is that?
It's a nineteen ninety Ford, it's a single axle dump. And the hinges are rusted off on the bed, and the motor no longer runs. I had it running this fall, I was gonna take it down the road, just to kind of keep the stuff lubricated, you know, the gear and oil and the transmission and everything. I jumped in, I went to take off, it died, and that was the last thing she did. I, I'm thinking the brain may have went out of it, because I'm not getting any spark.
So you, I mean, when I do this, you can decide if you want, keep the, do it on eBay, or trade in whatever you got.
It functions, you eBay it. If it doesn't function, you either make it function. But ideally, if you're gonna dispose of the vehicle, it should still work, because you got something that doesn't function. It ain't, nobody's gonna give you anything for it.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have legislative question, I was calling, I knew one day to explain our situation, and then next month, I'll bring a legislative question for the dump truck. I mean, I, you know, I don't know what it takes to fix that truck up, you know? Well, I mean, I don't know what the cutoff is, you know what the cutoff is on that? Because if it's more than that, then why would you put more money in it?
You're right, there's a, there's a point of diminishing return.
We can just scrap it, and it'd be better.
Okay. I'll have a legislative question next month for that. But we have, we have what the chassis cost, but we haven't got back to this on the bed yet, so we're waiting on, on that. The other thing, I have the street signs to finish the project that we started this summer. And I think Tim had told us that, and we could do some of it or all of it, to finish up the signs in the city. This estimate, is that for the remainder of the signs?
That's for the remainder of the signs.
The remainder of the signs is around fifteen thousand dollars to finish our signs. Now, that does not include the posts or hardware or.
Yeah, it does not include the post or hardware.
So do we have any post or hardware?
I have posts, but we would probably, because I have one there, we're gonna need at least a hundred posts to finish off the rest of the signs in the city. I do have some stored, I'm not sure how many, so eventually, somewhere along the line, we are gonna have to purchase some other posts.
So that's fifteen thousand plus, cost for.
It's hard to say, the last time we priced, and I got a price on those, 'cause they are.
Treated there.
Say it louder.
Powder coated.
There we go, thank you. With them being powder coated, it's roughly about two dollars and twenty cents a foot. And each post that we've been using is, is about ten to twelve feet long.
Two dollars or something?
Yeah, it's roughly two twenty a foot.
Twenty bucks a post.
And, and from the supplier that I got the last post from, he said whether you have a hundred made or one, you're gonna pay an extra five hundred dollars for them just to set everything up to run it.
Yeah.
Because of the color.
You know, probably with the posts and everything, we could probably be looking at less than twenty thousand for sure, to do it all. Because there might be some signs that we may have to add, there's a couple of places that we're still not sure what we want to do, so we might add a few more. But twenty thousand dollars, what did I give you, thirty-five to that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's what I got, it's better than what I got on the planning document.
So, um, that's something that, would we want to go ahead and do that, or do we want to wait till next month to start that process?
We can wait till next month, I mean, with this, with the weather.
No, so it'd be June by the time we start putting money in the ground. No, but it took us, how long did it take to get the last ones?
It took us a long time. I'm thinking.
Okay, precise.
Dave, thank you for that.
From the start of the process, from the time that they told me to the time that I actually got everything, it was about four to five months. They kept telling me, well, I'm gonna get them in October, never got anything in October. And they said, well, you're gonna get them in November, I never got them in November. I got half of them in Sep, in December, and I got the rest of them, I believe, in either the last part of January or February of last year.
So Bob, are you thinking, are you thinking in the finance committee for the first meeting in February, have a legislative request appropriating the money?
Uh, if you want me to do it then, or are you gonna do it in my committee?
I think we ought to do that then.
At the first finance?
Yeah.
Okay, next month?
That's what I think.
Okay, that's good.
Have first, and then, I mean, have, have the ordinance drawn up, let's have the first reading.
Or that meeting drawn up.
Yeah, and then have the second reading, I mean, it's fifteen thousand less than what we were thinking, so.
Is there a different vendor than what we've got, I mean, this doesn't seem like it.
The cost that I have right there is from a different vendor than what we got the stuff from.
Right.
Because when I got the cost estimate, I went with three different vendors. The vendor that we got the sign post from sent me basically a bunch of gobbledygook and did not give me a price. And any, and he was still saying that it was gonna be a five to six week turnover from the time that we put the order in until we actually received. But they told us that last time, like I said, it took at least three months for us to get the material. And I've talked to my two other vendors, and they pretty much guaranteed me that they shouldn't have a problem matching the color.
Do we, I was gonna ask, do we know absolute for sure that they'll look like the ones that we already have?
Absolute for sure? I would say no, but I would be eighty-five percent sure, 'cause just from talking to my vendor, and what I've explained to her before, she said that wouldn't be a problem of getting the exact same thing what we have.
We didn't do anything magical with our existing posts, they're fairly standard, right?
Yeah.
Powder.
They're powder coated, and two inch, they're two inch powder coated. And that's usually.
They're square, are they square?
They're square, yes, they're square posts, 'cause that's what they went with. It's a ODOT, I mean, it, it's one ODOT standard sizes and that, but it's a, it's a color brown. Now, whether it's an ODOT brown or not, I mean, we went through a lot of trouble just to find the right color to get everything to match, to match the ones that they put up on the project seventy-nine. So, and, and those posts matched the posts on seventy-nine. The colors of the signs matched the brown on the signs of the project on seventy-nine. Because I just assumed that ODOT brown was ODOT brown, but they evidently have five different shades or something, so, you know.
Of course, I can't take a one color brown. You'd be more specific.
No, we better not.
Uh, so we will bring, we will bring a, we'll have that on the agenda for the first meeting in February.
We will have a legislative question for that.
For the.
Big finance meeting in February.
Yeah. All right, the next thing, the, the mayor and I did interviews for the street department position. Nine, the nine people, I think, took the test.
One oh nine?
Nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was the other test.
Yeah, that was the other test, the street.
Yeah.
Because we required to have a current CDL, which we may have to look at that, because I think it kind of hurts who takes the test. I would like to open it up for more people, maybe give them within six months, maybe to get their CDL, if that was possible. Uh, but I think that limited the number of people who took this test. Even though we only had nine, everyone passed the test, and we interviewed three applicants. And we picked a man named Bradley Shane. He is currently working at McKean Township, and.
Bradley Shane?
Bradley Shane. S H A N E. And he will be starting a little next week, early on the twenty-ninth, he has a two-week notice, but we want to get him in here as soon as we can, especially with the snow and, and getting trained. But he had a lot of experience at McKean, in fact, he was the only employee in McKean Township taking care of all the roads. And. Uh, they need someone, like in a week.
I, I, um, talked to one of the township trustees there. Um, I believe his last name's Wondrum U, Jeff, I think his first name. And what I've asked Debbie Whitefield to do is to contact all of the people who applied for our position. Let them know that there could be interest for a similar type position in McKean Township. And to give them Jeff's phone number, if they're interested in talking to him about, about working for McKean Township. So try to, try to help him a little bit.
So he seemed.
Tough time of year, I, I can appreciate that.
But he seemed like a very, I mean, he was very happy to have the job, he seemed eager to work for the city.
Yes.
And had experience as a backup operation dump truck, and the things that we would want him to do, so. He was a candidate we picked, so he will be starting a week from.
Mechanic work.
Welding. Yeah. It's Bradley Shane, Bradley Shane, his living area. Uh, right off Flitridge Road, kind of near Lubbock. So who will be starting the next one today? I don't have anything else, does somebody else have anything? Nothing else, well. A germ at five fifty-eight.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, can we get some help again?
Yep.
Call Parks Recreation and David Shay to order at five fifty-nine, we're signing this pool, I can get you a spot.
It's the time of year that Charlie Kyle, he is kind of like part-time, correct person, and he also works part-time here at City Hall. And Phil Mitchell, they go to the various schools to recruit pool employees. They, in fact, they're starting tomorrow, I can't tell you which school they're going to tomorrow, but Charlie said they're starting tomorrow. And they usually go to school for their lunch hour, and have applications, and talk about the pool and what jobs are available. It's been a very successful program for us. Along with that, the minimum wage has went up to seven dollars and ninety-five cents, that's the lowest we can pay. So of course, with that minimum wage, we have, we'll have to adjust whatever one else makes in the city too, a little bit, as far as the pool goes. So, you know, they're making a decent wage for a summer job, and we're expecting a lot of applications. Usually, we've never hired every application, we've never been short on applications, in fact, probably, we have fifty or more applications, where people don't even hire, we have so many. So we hope that we always have that turnout for that, but I think on school, school helps promote our pool, and also helps promote getting decent employees for our pool. So they will be starting that, so if you have anyone that wants to work at the pool, you know, we are taking applications. And they can turn them in here at City Hall, the, the application's online, they can download. And, but you would have to physically bring that in here, or you can pick up a pool application here at City Hall.
Do in by end of March, right?
Yes, try to do that.
So we've determined that there's no exemption for these temporary employees for the minimum wage requirement?
I had David look, we can't find a.
There's no.
Can't find it.
No way of getting out of it.
No way.
It, it, it brings in too much revenue, the cutoff, I want to say, is like two hundred and, it's two hundred and fifty-something thousand, or two hundred and eighty-something, I, I can't remember. There's a certain cutoff where if you don't have revenue to that, then you don't have to have a, you know, the minimum wage in effect, but we, we, we welcome that, so. we're well above that, so.
We're still looking at, you know, cutting how many people we have there and try to do as much cost cutting because as we've talked in here many times, this minimum wage is, is starting to hurt us a little bit. And, um, if it goes even higher, we'll really have to look at what we're gonna do, uh, with the talk of that going higher, but, um, it just hurts, uh, you know, something like us, you know, it hurts us tremendously. I mean, our payroll's well over two hundred thousand. Well, it cuts into what, what we're trying to do. And we still have another, what, eight years left on the debt service probably, on the groups to the pool.
Seven or eight, I think.
Seven or eight, something. So, um, you know, it's a, it's a concern that I really have and I really hope we were gonna find something. In fact, we, we didn't have to do that, but, um, apparently we do, so. Anyway, we're on the recruiting trail to, uh, take care of that. I just wanna skip to three since we're, we're, uh, three and four since we're talking, I should have arranged that a little bit better, but three, the pool rates are in place now, I discussed that the last time we were here, uh, we are signing those pool rates at, at the new rates. Like I said, we are trying, we'll do some advertising with that, but we are trying to get a little bit of a bigger break preseason and hopefully people will buy more memberships early. Uh, so we're gonna have to see how that works and see if that increases sales with us, but we will advertise that, um, try to get as many pool memberships in, um, early this year.
Is it pretty much what you presented to us before?
Yes, yes. We, we just cut it like ten dollars off of the family and five dollars off of, from what it was last year.
Are you also doing the thing at the end of the season where you have to reduce membership earlier?
Yes, that is July fifteenth. Everything that we talked about, we, we are, we have enacted. And then we are going to try to do one day, I think we said we, we don't know which day it is or how we're doing.
Just whenever you get them.
Yeah, we, uh, you can have it after five rate, maybe for the day, we'll see how that works. We're trying, trying to do more, so we just try to get more people in and hopefully more revenue. Uh, so those rates are in effect now. Uh, along with that, on number four, uh, we're starting our pool management meetings that looks like they're Rhonda White and Anne Clippinger will be back, uh, so that's a good experienced staff to have. They always have many demands from me when we move, but I get, I get madder a little bit, but, uh, we always come to some kind of agreement. So, we have, uh, and we'll just be discussing, uh, what we're gonna pay the kids with this minimum wage, what we have to do to adjust, what we're paying for head guards and lifeguards and concession workers and everything else we have, so we always have to make some adjustment when the minimum wage goes up. So with those meetings, we'll be starting, uh, in a couple of weeks. And, um, that helps us prepare for the season. Uh, with swim lessons and dates and all those things that we, we take care of. Uh, so I think that takes care, uh, of the pool. And then we'll go back to number two with the maintenance of the Shea House. We had a couple, uh, maintenance issues at the Shea House, the, uh, they called us and said the generator, um, didn't kick on when the electricity went off, I think, you know, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, electricity went off a little bit. Uh, there is an alarm that goes off, uh, which probably isn't much as, as I'm saying, when there's alarm go, but you have to reset the generator. Uh, so it wasn't anything, you know, horrible.
An alarm goes off on the generator?
Yeah, when it, when it shuts off and then you have to reset, you have to reset it. And with the new, all the new people being there, um, they didn't know, so that, so Craig went over, we don't have to do anything with it. And then, uh, they said that there was a water leak and then of course that always scares us, but, um, we didn't really find anything and we think it's snow got inside the building, which is very easy to do, and melted and was coming through soon, but it it wasn't a water leak like we had the one time.
So we, just that, did we, uh, uh, look at the, the meter, make sure that, you know, that the needle wasn't moving or anything?
Well, whatever Craig did, he said there's not a water leak, so whatever he did, I'm sure he did everything right.
Okay.
Uh, that goes with that. And then along anything?
Where were they seeing the water?
I think it was in that dining, the, not the dining room, but that main, when you come in from the back, what's that room called, huh?
The Camelot Room?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's the one with the chandelier.
Well, I don't know, it's just the one, it's the room, it's just that room that's got the two doors that come in from the outside. Off the back porch, what's that room called?
The foyer?
Oh.
Where was it coming from, Bob?
I think it's close to working that one time. But it wasn't, but it wasn't a water leak, so. Snow blowing in, I think so. Um, and then next month, uh, Jill was coming to my meeting, right?
Um, I talked to Deb, I thought I'd just go ahead then and check their bills in the committee, if you're fine with it. My suggestion would be that we invite, uh, invite them to, uh, come to present a, a complete, uh, financial report for two thousand thirteen and then also, um, uh, discuss, you know, what programming they have planned for two thousand fourteen for the, for the February meeting. If the committee's okay with that.
And you will take care of invitation?
I'll send an email, uh, probably tomorrow. I'll copy you on it, Bob.
Yep. And then the last thing I have, uh, this thing, park, park employees are out, out plowing snow. When we get the call from the police department, Dave calls everyone out and, um, we have three guys in the parks that are available most of the time. Craig does a lot of traveling this time of year because his daughter's in his first senior year in college playing basketball, so he's trying to go all those games, so it's hit and miss with him sometimes in the weekend. And then we have Ronnie and Jimmy Crainer, Jimmy Crainer is very experienced in the street department, so that helps. So we're utilizing three guys in the, in the, uh, parks department plus snow, which helps us, you know, as much as it, it can be. And then, um, with that, and I should have mentioned this during the street, which I think I mentioned last month, uh, Leonard Schaefer, also known as Hook, last day will be the thirty-first.
Yes.
January thirty-first will be Hook's last day and our new employee will start the twenty-eighth.
Twenty?
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-ninth?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-ninth.
Starts day one.
Two days.
Just a question, how, how many total do you have, um, I mean, one, you know, count them.
Including the parks?
Yeah. Ten?
No. Eight, nine?
Eight.
Well, there's six of us, nine, nine total.
You do a whole job, I mean, yeah, it just, you know, I mean.
We, we don't get everything at once, but we're trying.
You stay, you stay on top of it, that's the main thing. You guys pay all the praise in the world, I tell you, but man, it's amazing what you do compared to what you look at when you cross over into the north city limits. They're doing a little bit better job this year, I think.
They've also got a lot more miles to deal with than we do, so. Apples and oranges a little bit.
Keith, you're up.
You gonna have any send-off for Hook?
Well, I've asked Dave, I'll have her back.
I honestly, I don't think he wants anything. I mean, if, if you have a gathering of any kind, I'd like you to let me know.
Okay.
How many years is he? Came here a little late, so.
Fifteen or fifteen?
I'll tell you.
He worked at Chili Company for years.
Yeah.
Didn't he have his anniversary recently?
I think he had it.
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
Yeah, fifteen years in April.
Okay.
Alright, do you have any questions or comments for Parks Rec and David Shea, any other agenda items?
Um, well, Jan's gonna speak, um, yes, unless you have a question, Bob, right off the bat.
I do.
This has nothing to do with your boys at Parks. But I've driven by the Shea House at night and the lights that are on the front of the house, the side of the house, the walkway going up and the side entrance, which you use a lot at night, are not on.
Are they ground lights?
No, the ones on the wall for the door going in on the south entrance, that's out. The lights going up the walkway from the main gate are out, they're on a timer. The front light on the sign that is out front is out. The problem is, they don't go, they come in at eight and leave at four and nobody ever comes back to check the lights or anything. And if we ever had a real problem, we always, of course, call Craig. He came over and took care of the lights if we couldn't take care of it. And I just think it's getting to a point, the furniture that they've set out by the flagpole, which was on the veranda wherever they put up the dance floor or wherever, is still sitting out by the flagpole, it's been there almost a year now. I know it's metal, but it's, to me, it should be protected a little and put back up on the veranda, but it's.
I've also had, uh, a couple of people say that, you're saying that there are exterior lights that are out.
Out.
I've had a couple of people say that there are interior lights that seem to be on.
Yes, I've heard that.
You know, at, at, at night, which doesn't quite make much sense. I'll, I'll include that in my email, uh, towards tomorrow.
Yeah, I can send Craig over there and see if they need some assistance for the.
Well, the one thing that you talked about on the generator, I did have Craig come over and explain that to John. That he had to check the oil in it and he had to come out and check it for timing. And Craig showed him how to set it up.
Well, he got showed again a couple of weeks ago, so.
Okay.
Thanks for this, we'll, we'll check this light through. Jan, who's that?
Well, since he stood up, I will too, but I'm gonna stand up by the culprit.
Well, the light keeps back off for you.
There you go.
How's that sound, Mark?
That sounds.
Well, anyway, um, some time ago, Mark called me, or the mayor, I may use the term mayor, called me and asked if, uh, the Friendship Club would consider a parade. And so I, you know, we talked back and forth and I think his idea of an Armed Forces Day Parade is a good idea. I think it's long overdue that we honor, and we can never give it enough honor to the Armed Forces, so there's nothing in Looking County, as far as we know, that, that has really held a parade on that particular day, which is the, and please write this down, the third Saturday in May, because, uh, we feel that if we're gonna do this, it is important that you be behind this as well as the Friendship Club. It would be a, uh, a co-sponsor, if you wanna co-call it sponsorship type of thing, and that is with the city as well as with the Friendship Club. With the majority of the responsibility obviously falling on the club. So anyway, we've set that up and we've had a number of meetings with the mayor and John Groff. I talked with Bob today, so we've, and we've talked with Keith, so we pretty well have our ground floor, you know, and my holdup was going to be that if we're gonna have a military parade, then the military needs to be involved, otherwise there's no purpose of having a parade. Uh, so I have been in contact with a, a number of people and I'm just, I wrote down a few things here while you were talking, let me go down through it so that if there are questions, then at least you have the basis. It's gonna be Saturday, May the seventeen, the parade theme, and we wanna stick with our theme, no matter who we have involved is a salute to the Armed Forces, this is not a political parade, it is an Armed Forces Day Parade. It is a county-wide, we will be invi- involving veterans groups and so forth that are militarily involved, uh, throughout the entire county. The staging will be, we're hoping to have it at, the staging at the Indian Mountain Mall. Mark, help me, is that over by H H Greg?
Yeah, behind, uh, behind the H H Greg.
Cause we talked about two different places and then the route would be from that particular point.
Oh, you're done.
Oh, I know.
Come on, now, boy.
But anyway, we would take the, uh, the Ring Road then out towards, I don't know where that area is, where the light is, I know it's beyond where, I don't know the two areas there, but anyway, it's where the light is, uh, going off onto thirtieth.
Next to where, next to where Stacy's is, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
That mall access right there.
Uh, no, 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 no. Well, we talked about that when we even talked about.
Or the one beneath McDonald's.
More, yeah, one of them, yeah.
Yeah, one of those too.
But anyway, one of those up in that area. Uh, go off onto thirtieth, turn left on thirtieth, go down to Cynthia, turn left on Cynthia, down to the park. That is a one point two mile parade, we wanna keep it within forty minutes to an hour, um, or at least that's what our thought is, depending upon our response. Um, the staging for the parade, we wanna, we wanna give it plenty of time, starting at eight o'clock in the morning, but the parade itself would begin at twelve. And the contacts that we have made so far, uh, the Air Force Metrology, uh, they, their entire group, with the exception of the Colonel, is gonna be gone that, those, their two months that they're gone, and that's one of the months, but she is going to participate. Uh, the recruiters have been con, all the recruiters have been contacted, all the reserve units have been contacted. The Ohio National Guard has been my best contact and that is Master Sergeant Pierce, who actually, uh, pretty much is the one-stop shop, as he calls himself, for working through all of that. And the local unit does want to participate. The Marines are in training that weekend with their new recruits, but at least, uh, he had, what he told me is that the local unit, uh, the National Guard wants to participate and that's the key thing, is if we don't have a military group participating, then we need to rethink the whole thing through. Uh, Jim Watercutter has been a tremendous help to me, he has contacted all eighteen veterans groups, groups throughout Looking County. Uh, and they, you know, they only meet once a month, so consequently it's gonna take a little time to get those people involved. And as we reviewed, uh, the groups today, we think there's about six that will more than likely participate, uh, at least.
Vietnam vets?
Pardon me?
The Vietnam vets.
Yeah, well, they were contacted and he's going to follow up, uh, he wants to give them a little time and then he wants to follow up with that with another one. Uh, the, I had a meeting today along with Jim, John Groff, and then the mayor came in, came in for a little while with a man by the name of Dave Shoemaker, who has been a tremendous help. I'm glad that, you know, I was referred to him because he, uh, is very much attuned to restored military vehicles. He has four, three or four himself, along with a cannon. Uh, we can use, he will be gone that weekend, there's something going on in Finley, but he will work, uh, behind the scenes with us to get us ready and he will let us use or include two of his vehicles, provided the mayor is able to control, what was the one mayor that we said really took a lot of, uh, work and you had to turn all four wheels at the same time? We thought that'd be a good one, that was a good, that's a good one, thank you, I wanna see you.
I wasn't in there for that, for that conversation, I didn't hear that.
No, that's, that's pretty good, that was, I thought that was a good one for you. But anyway, we have to have, we're gonna be, John Groff's gonna get a couple of drivers for us for his, uh, vehicles and the only thing that he is requesting are very expensive, something like twenty thousand dollars or more apiece, but, you know, we'll, I've talked to Bob about us, um, having them safe, safely kept for a couple of, or four days while this gentleman is gone, participating in a, an activity in Finley and we can work through it. Anyway, he is gonna help us, he is going to do some investigation about other people who have restored vehicles. Um, and Sergeant, uh, Master Sergeant Pierce knows that, he said, I can't have a tank. I wanted a tank. Well, because the mayor won't and Keith will not take care of cleaning, fixing up the road after the tank gets torn up. Unless Keith would be willing to invest in that, I think I could talk the other.
For some reason, I thought there were rubber things that you could put in the.
There are.
But it still tears it up?
It still tears it up, yeah, well, I am down again.
Tears up the asphalt.
And we cannot have a flyover because of the sequester. I, I did request that, but you know, if we all pray hard enough, maybe God will lift that and we can have our flyover. Just like the light came back on.
There you go.
Well, anyway, um, we are still, uh, and in talking with the gentleman today, it was a very productive meeting. Uh, he suggested that I get ahold, again, even though we contacted the veterans, he wants me to call the V S O, the Veterans Service Office, and meet with those people. Uh, there is a, a museum over in Grove Court called Mott's Museum and they have, uh, restored, I guess it's a really nice, I haven't been there, but they said it's a nice military museum and that they may have something that they would wanna do to participate. There's a local group of military mothers, um, the Gold Star, the Blue Star, in reference to, I guess the Gold Star is if the, um, if they've lost a son or a daughter in the war, then Blue Star is if they have a son or daughter that's in the war. So we wanna make sure that we get them involved, particularly because it's the week after Mother's Day, would be kinda nice to do a proclamation or something like that. We're gonna be work, contacting ROTC, the Fairfield County Airport has a museum with vehicles, so these are the things that we are yet to do. I, um, our concern was.
Civil Air Patrol.
Yes. Okay, and the, yeah, the Civil Air Patrol. But anyway, he, Dave recommended that we consider also some of these vets that are in the nursing homes and so forth, and how they're going to be transported on the, in the parade. And I called the Licking County AG, and they will give us a bus for them, for, and at no cost. So I think that was really nice. We're gonna be working with some of the service organizations, and I know that some of you are involved with that. Our concentration right now is the parade, but we do feel it would be nice, and we're gonna need a lot of help. Obviously, we need a lot of volunteers. But we do, would like, once we get to the park, we're not doing a static display that's, that's really gonna have a carnival effect. What we wanna do is get, if we have the vehicles and the, and the people, we get them down there. Let them stay for a little while, let things kinda clear out, maybe an hour or something like that. Because we wanna be careful, as I was talking with Bob, our concern, you know, is getting people in and out of that parking, that park area. The static display could stay down there for about an hour, people could then interact with it. If we could get some service groups, some donations of, some service groups to maybe help us down there, and then get some people to donate, like hot dogs and something to drink, and provide that for the vets and go from that particular point. The mayor is going to be contacting the school bands, and we're also going to try to get ahold of the 4H, 4H band, the Civil Air Patrol. John Groff, that's the reason I had that separate. He is going to get ahold of the Civil, of the Civil Air Patrol, and the Thirtieth Ohio Civil War reenactment route as well. That would be kinda fun. We need, we are gonna be holding a meeting, safety meetings, as far as the police and the fire concerned. I'm having a meeting on Saturday with some of the members of the Friendship Club who have been shown and expressed an interest in serving on a little committee to get us started. We're gonna talk about the parade, and then we know we have advertising to do, as well as fundraising, some fundraising to do. So that's where we are. We have talked that we don't want a big political parade, but we do feel Keith is the host city. So consequently, as I told the mayor, he has to participate, whether he wants to or not. And Keith, we asked Keith to keep his date open, and what we would like to do is have you keep your date open, because we, we feel that it's important for the city to have a presence in this and say that Keith, the city, if Keith supports the Armed Forces or salutes the Armed Forces, use your thing.
What's the timing gonna be on that?
The timing will be, well, the staging starts at eight. That doesn't necessarily mean you would have to be there at eight. But the parade begins at twelve. Well, and for you, I would much rather have you there at eight. I wanna see what you look like.
I have no idea.
Just a second. Then it, it will take us about an hour, plan on about an hour, and then some time, you'll wanna spend some time, I would say until two. You know, prob, I don't know, but we'll be getting more information out. And we, I have downloaded off of, I've done a little bit of research on some of the other parades, you know, Armed Forces Day parades, and I have downloaded a form. I wanna analyze that and come up with our own form, so that everybody knows it's on the same page at the same time. And that we, we wanna set, we do wanna set some strict restrictions, regulations here, because we don't want just anybody, you know, then we have, we lose our theme of the Armed Forces. Now, we have talked about if we have a major donor, and we've worked with Keith on how to handle this, but if we have a major donor, then, you know, it still has to be related to a salute to the Armed Forces and that that type of an individual should participate.
What about, like, are you gonna have bands, like high school bands?
Yes, we would.
That's what I'm saying. I'm gonna try to get, I'm gonna try to contact the high schools here in Licking County and encourage their bands, their marching bands to participate. And this is a countywide, we want it to be a countywide, you know, parade, have, you know, representation from, from all parts of the county. That's not to say that, it's not to say that every high school will send their band, but, you know, maybe an area's got a veterans group, you know, that's gonna come or something. We'd like to have a broad spectrum of participation throughout the county.
Dave emphasized the importance of bands. He's experienced in this and.
I told Jan that she oughta get their high state band.
I think, I think one of you guys, who is most connected with that? Is that you, Tim? Oh, come on.
You're saying, so the parade will, like, kick off around nine, is what you're saying?
No, the parade, well, the parade itself starts at twelve. The actual parade starts at twelve. The staging is getting everybody there and getting them lined up and.
You want me there at eight, at twelve o'clock?
I just wanna see what you look like.
That's what I happen to.
I know where he lives.
He's writing it down, nine a.m.
Ask Bob, he's seen these kind of things. Any other questions that you have, you know, hopefully we have your support and.
Yeah, there's, when we were looking, obviously, it's been, it's been a long time since there's been a parade in Heath.
Since ninety-eight or ninety-nine, right, Bob? Right around there.
For, for various logistical reasons. So I think it'll be, I think it'll be great for the city from, from that standpoint. There are a no, throughout the county, there are a number of parades and events that happen on Memorial Day and on Veterans Day. And, you know, those obviously are focused on, on those who have served. I think it'll be a bit unique in this area, that our Armed Forces Day Parade will also be focused on those that are currently serving their country. As Dan said, that's why I think it would be great if we can get as much participation as possible from, you know, active members of the military in the county, reserve units in, in the area, and National Guard, that kind of thing.
Well, and as Dave said, you know, when, because we mentioned something about vets, he said, actually, people who are in the military and have served six months are classified as vets as well, because they are then entitled to the military benefits, you know, if they're, if they have to go out for some particular reason. So, you know, we look at the whole picture, and I guess there are a couple of things that I'm asking you to do. Number one is to talk this up with others, if you know, if you can find anybody who has military equipment, or vehicles, I should say, that, where they may be willing to participate in the parade, that would be great. And I'd be happy to talk with the individual, get an email with them and get back and forth. And secondly, if you are involved with a certain, and I know many of you are, a service organization, if you want me to come and talk with them, I'm happy to do that. If you wanna convey the information, or you want me to email you the information that you can convey, we are going to need a lot of help. And we would appreciate this being something that Keith really takes ahold of, not just a little friendship club of a few members, but, you know, if we spread this, the wealth out to everybody, that would be a tremendous help. So we are going to be here, help, you can call me. I'll give you my cell phone number if you need for me to contact with me, that's three, three, four, three, eight, eight, zero. Or if you wanna pass that on to your, to your service organization, I'll be happy to do whatever. You know, I just, if we're gonna do it, I wanna do it right.
You know, the, on Seventy-Nine, we have a place that put flags. But on Thirty Street, I don't think we've ever.
We don't.
On Thirty Street.
Yeah, we don't.
If, I mean, if there were ways that we could put those same things up, and I can't even tell you what poles, I only drive down a million times, but we could put the same things that are on Seventy-Nine and just put those flags maybe on Thirty Street instead of putting them. Unless we purchase more flags, we could put them on Seventy-Nine and Thirty, but we could maybe move them on Thirty Street. I know on July second, the flags that go in the ground, you know, that's always very impressive.
Yeah, people.
Yeah, they like going down some.
That's the, what's the reality group there on?
HER.
HER, yeah, they do that, of course.
So you can have.
Probably have a connection there, don't you? Have a connection there, maybe.
I put a lot of flags in the ground myself.
There you go, there's your first volunteer.
You're a good guy. I can depend on him, I have to go get him out there.
And Newark, though, doesn't work.
That's okay, honey, I know how to pass.
It's gonna have a lot of traffic back up over through Newark there. I know our church is on Thirty Street, and we're just limited on how much time we can hold the traffic up on Sunday. Saturday and Sunday's your big day for the shopping.
We'll reroute them. I have confidence, we'll reroute them. We'll reroute them to the park.
Well, can't you route them over here, is that?
Yeah, you're talking about backing it up. We're over to sixteen.
Yeah, you could route them.
Well, on a Sunday.
Hold traffic for an hour, they'll just have to go down period. We're trying to get out on Main Street, and you guys are leaving churches.
Yeah, that's what I say, it's, saves a lot of logistics there, I think you might run into.
There are. But we felt that it was best to keep it off of Seventy-Nine.
Yeah, they won't, state won't let you, because we tried to have that one parade down Seventy-Nine, the last one we had, and they wouldn't let us.
The only thing that we gotta be careful of, and so I spoke with Bob today, and Bob, and I told Bob that maybe he needs to come in on some of our meetings, is getting people in and out of the park safely.
Because we had one route, come out of the mall. We come out, then went across the Andover and down Circle of School, you know. We had that one time, lined up, way back down.
If the issue is, if you got people coming in, and you have people that are already there, and once it gets in, they're trying to leave, and all the military's trying to leave at the same time, that's too much at the same time. So we gotta figure, you know, we gotta look on our timing. But we have time to do it, and that's why we're starting right now. As I said, it sounds like a long time before May the seventh, whatever it is, seventeenth, but it isn't, not to do this kind of a job. So any other questions that I can, that I can entertain at this point?
Thanks, Jan.
Thanks, Tim.
Does anybody else have anything for Davis Shay, Park Rec, Park's Rec and Davis Shay? Yes.
Deb, I'll direct this to you. What kind of answers did you get to the questions that the council members had on the last one?
There really weren't, we, when I finally got down, there weren't that many. I did get an explanation, I could send it out to you. It was just one of the things, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I could give it to you. I'm gonna give it to my email and show it to you, but, but we did get an answer. And the one thing was like an explanation of what that category was, and she gave me a listing of all the things that were covered in that. So we only ended up with probably two questions. One was because the figures didn't match with the bed tax and the category that was kind of an other, didn't really explain what it was, but I do have answers to that, I just don't have it.
Did anybody ever find out what that piece of equipment was they bought, that nobody knew what it was? A reverse something or other?
Oh, the reverse osmosis thing.
They might have figured that.
It's something to do with the water system.
Well, it was required because of the, but it was required, I think it was like a health issue,
because of the, the size of what they would do.
The Health Department?
I'm not a plumber, I don't really begin to answer that.
Did the Health Department require, or did the Shay House require?
I'm, I, they didn't, I don't think they wanted to do it, it was an expense, but I think that they were told they needed to have it.
I think the issue was related to the coffee pot, that the coffee pot just simply requires a particular type of filter. That would have avoided that sort of thing. And if they don't use that filter, then they have a problem.
I understood it was simply a water purifier.
But I don't know.
It didn't, that, that was not what I gathered from it, but I, listen, I'm not, that's not my area of expertise, so we would need to ask for further explanation if someone wants that.
Since we're back on the Shay House, I have one thing that's been bothering me. And I'm, I'm directing this to you. Why did they say that they had to cancel the Victorian Christmas? When we had it for eleven years, rain, snow, sleet or hail, the horses walked around in ice. We stood out in the snow and directed traffic. I just, we laid down plastic. They said that they were afraid that the carpets would get, if they'd have done a little effort on their part and laid down the plastic and stuff, and then, then they didn't reschedule it. I just.
Well, I think that, you know, I've heard several things. I know they got advice on that. It wasn't just them deciding to do that, but one of the issues was the horses, that if the horses went down, they would have to.
She goes down around the square all winter long with the horses. That, I, we talked to her, and that's not a problem. They used to stand out there in the snow and, and what.
Didn't you talk to her as well, Mark?
I had an email exchange.
Okay. Would you wanna speak to that?
Of course, next month would be a good time, Ben.
That's what I was thinking.
But, I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember without having the email in front of me.
She has.
I wanna say that there was, she, she had expressed in her email concern with the condition of the, of the streets. Yeah. I, I can't remember specifically, but it was along that, along that, that line.
If I remember right, it was supposed to be worse than it ended up.
Right.
And I really didn't disagree with their canceling it, because I didn't wanna get out in that type of weather.
Yeah, but it turned out to be a nice.
In thirty days, we can ask her and get an answer.
And by the sound of it, they never laid plastic if they were not thinking about, because we did that days ahead. We laid plastic down in all the pathways that they were gonna go. She, the only reason I bring it up is when I left, Joe had said to me, there is never going to be a Victorian Christmas. And I said, why not? We don't make any money off of it, and she says, it's too much work. I said.
I don't know, she contacted me three times about Father Christmas, so.
And, and they really did have the plans in place, the programs were all printed. I mean, she, the things that she couldn't cancel, she had lots of donuts, because I know that she was trying to get rid of donuts. I mean, there were a lot of things that money was spent that couldn't be canceled. I think maybe cordial.
Plenty of parking volunteers lined up too, that, you know, you gotta call, I gotta call nine a.m.
Yep, nine a.m. saying it's canceled.
Shut her down, so.
Well, if she had all these people lined up, like Joe just said, why didn't she reschedule for Sunday?
I, I.
And she had a notice in the paper, no rescheduling. And what a cheap way to put a sign, a plastic sign at the end of the driveway, sorry, canceled. And that's, by the way, when Craig was over, Bob, there's a wooden post still on the dog pile that they had to sign. You never forget that.
February eighteen, February eighteen, by February eighteen.
Mark, you wanna come? I'll be here, please. Honestly, I don't hate anybody, it's just I love that house so much. I didn't put eleven years in there for just the fun of it, so it's one of those things.
All right, anything else?
Do I need a five-minute break before we head to finance, or you wanna start now?
Five minutes.
Okay, motion carried.
Was there one in my box, Keith, and agenda, so I'm on you?
Yep. I didn't like to.
I'll go with mine.
That's all right. It should be funny.
Mayor, is there a plan of anything going on at seven?
BCBA.
At seven thirty, right?
Yes. Yeah, it's gonna be back in the conference room, back, back over there.
Seven.
Seven thirty.
John, BCBA is seven or seven thirty?
So it's the same time as council?
Yeah. We'll have the same thing next month too, for pressings. I don't know.
I forgot about that.
I'm pretty sure our office is.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know. Babe, thanks for having us. Appreciate it. So just set it around the corner there, I'll put it later, Dave.
Yeah, that'll be a good place for it.
To me, I think, well. There should be somebody. Like a double check. Whoever the key is, or has to be done.
Like tonight.
Personally, I started five forty-five and made thirty-six, but you hear five thirty.
I know. And you go there and you just hope that they didn't, you know.
Anyway, I like that. I've been watching online for years going, I found two of them, they're wrong colors. Found a red one and a black one. Well, and if I get one, he'll steal my truck. No, I did.
We talked about it.
There you go.
His truck's new.
Then you get that there, yeah.
Two thousand eight. Now.
Yeah.
There's a whole bunch of other businesses. Then you might want to buy a little more. No, no new people.
I did, I bought, uh, I bought aftermarket fog滤s and installed it. I don't even worry. You've got the same holes, probably the same knockout, little plastic thing to get it under there, inch aside of that. I think I paid, uh, twenty fifty or sixty dollars for the wires.
The reason.
On line and to the higher, ran the wires and everything, hired a pro of the plane, but John Droppich went in there. I hardly ever use.
I just. They did, they did. Oh, too big. I was, I was losing. If your place weren't, I, I, what's that have to do with tonight? Still got one there.
Right.
Yes.
How you doing, sir?
Okay, how are you?
Good.
How are you?
Pretty much, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks again, Jan. Appreciate it.
Okay, so we've got an agenda and two handouts, correct?
Correct.
Before I get started, does everybody have an agenda and two handouts?
Yep.
Okay, six forty-seven, we'll call Finance Committee to order. If you need anything, you got a copy?
I got it.
Okay, legislative request. We have one, appropriate five hundred ninety-four thousand five dollars for the General Fund of Capital Improvements and Budget Stabilization Funds. Keith, any of the comments on this?
Well, if, if you guys got your fund report at the end of December, you might have noticed that, uh, there was two million five hundred ninety-four thousand five dollars for the ending balance at the end of two thousand thirteen. So you may recall that, that, uh, we started with exactly two million dollars. So we were in the black this year to the tune of five hundred ninety-four thousand five dollars. Makes it nice and easy for your math to reset things to at two million dollar mark. Uh, our income tax collections in reference to the, uh, other chart that you received were up almost exactly ten percent from the preceding year. Nine point nine nine three one, something like that, which is, uh, fantastic. I think it's the, uh, best year we've had in my years as being auditor. And I'd like you to believe that it's my fault. No.
Only if we can blame the prior years.
Yeah.
So this is basically the, the balancing number to get us back to the two million.
Right. This is removing the five hundred ninety-four thousand five dollars from the general fund and placing four hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred of those dollars into the capital improvement fund and one hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and five into the budget stabilization. I'm gonna let the mayor express to you why the proportions the way they are. He'll, I'm sure, refer to one of the handouts that you've got.
Can you give me those numbers again, please?
Look at the bottom of this one, Brian. That's what we're, that's what the legislative request has, uh, proposes to be put from the general fund into the capital improvement fund. This is, um, the four hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred on the bottom of your handout. That's, that's the amount that would go to, uh, capital improvements. And the balance of the five ninety-four oh five, which is one forty-five thousand three oh five, would go to budget stabilization. One hundred forty-five thousand three hundred and five. First of all, I guess let me start by saying that we know that for years now we have not been able to adequately fund, uh, the capital improvement fund. In part, in large part due to the declining tax revenue that, uh, that we've had over the years. And also to the expense of, um, trying to provide the services, the existing services that we do to, to the people of Heath. So, um, with, with the additional, um, revenue that we received in two thousand thirteen relative to our expenses, uh, we would propose that, that a portion of it go into the capital improvement fund and a portion of it go into the budget stabilization fund, fund, from which we have had to take money in recent years in order to start the general fund, uh, each year at two million dollars. This is, uh, the planning document. Uh, it is just that, a, a planning document um, for capital improvement expenditures in two thousand fourteen. You will see various items, some of them that have an asterisk beside them and some of them that don't. Those that do not have an asterisk beside them are those that we had planned to do in two thousand fourteen prior to knowing that we were in the black by almost six hundred thousand dollars. There, you know, I have each of the department head submit to me a list of capital improvement expenditures that they would like to see for the year. Uh, we go through that list and prioritize. What we did then was go back to that information and what we had prioritized previously that did not make the cut, I now have included on this planning document. Those that have the asterisk, asterisk are the ones that were included after knowledge of our end of year balance. If you total all of these items up and, 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 you know, as, as we try to do with the budget, the concept is try to overestimate how much we're gonna spend. If you add up all of the items that are listed here, they total six hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. Now, in the two thousand fourteen budget, we were already planning on taking three percent of our budgeted five point eight million tax revenue and putting that into the capital improvement fund. That's why I backed out the hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar figure. What that then leaves us is, is the four forty-eight seven. So the legislative request shows that amount from general fund to capital improvement and then the rest going from general fund to budget stabilization. Like I said, we're trying to think high. Uh, we talked about the dump truck in the street. You'll see that, like we talked about on the planning document, we have thirty-five thousand planned for the street sign replacements. It, you know, it may come in around twenty or whatever. You'll see on the fire side, um, the medic unit, um, we have a, a range there. Um, I have made sure that Chief Huggins understands that we will not be going for the Lamborghini of medic units, uh, anymore. He is on board with that concept. That is a, a range that he has from having talked to fire chiefs in the area that have recently purchased, uh, new medic units. On the police side, again, we, we were originally planning on two new patrol cars. There was also, in the information submitted to me, there was information on a new K nine unit as well. This forty thousand dollar figure, um, is, uh, we're basing that on the K nine unit, but the K nine unit, uh, being, uh, a, an SUV as opposed to a Charger. Um, there's various advantages to doing that, including the ability for the K nine officer to have someone in the backseat and transporting that person somewhere while the, the dog being in the back back as my dad used to always describe it in our station wagon. Um, and the dog would be in the back back. I'll leave him up, up in a second, see. Well, see, that's the thing, you know, so I, I'm, I'm.
Put the prisoner in the back.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how, I was gonna say, I'm not sure how Havik, uh, likes having a passenger sit beside him in the, in the back of a Charger. I'm not sure Bella was very appreciative of that.
If you really don't like the prisoner, you put him together.
Then they won't do it a second.
So, um, so anyway, um, this is what, you know, uh, we're, the, the expanded capital improvement planning document that we have, um, uh, in, in my opinion, this does not reflect us now being drunken sailors and blowing through, you know, all of the, um, money, uh, that we, you know, all the overage that we had come in in two thousand thirteen. Um, but these are necessary items that did not make the cut that I think now, you know, can make the cut, um, based on, and, and there are still some items that did not even make this cut. So I want you to understand, this does not reflect a Katie bar the door philosophy now on capital improvement spending. So anyway, that's what we have mapped out. Yes?
I think it's a great idea. Everything you've done here and everything you're talking about, the nice thing is that it still leaves us at the undercover balance that we finished this year at during all these coming into next year. We can only hope for another good year, but if not, we're still seeing that same undercover balance unless something comes up here and there, but so we still have, what, one point seven million still in that fund at, at the end of two thousand and fourteen, if we don't touch it and do all these improvements. I think it's a good idea.
I appreciate that, Brian. Thank you.
We're expecting that, were you?
No.
Oh, okay.
I know, I, I, I.
He's got his head in there.
I, I also, I, I think it's important too. I think we need to talk a little bit about why our, uh, tax receipts overall were up ten percent compared to last year. Kim Geller will tell you and Keith will tell you as well that the overwhelming vast majority of the gains between two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen are business profit tax revenue. That is the revenue that is at such great risk with the House Bill five legislation, the revised House Bill five legislation that is passed the State, uh, House and is now in the hands of the State Senate. The gains that you see would not be there if House Bill five were in place today as the legislation proposes, point blank, period. So I want everyone to understand that, first of all, our gains are based on corporate profit tax, which we don't know if our businesses in the city will have as good a year in two thousand fourteen as they did in thirteen. We hope they do and we do what we can to try to support them to do so. But, uh, this is no guarantee. Not just next year, but for years and years to come. You know, like I said, the, the future, um, revenue looks tough if House Bill five is enacted as law as currently drafted. And, and, and that's something that I think everyone in the city needs to understand clearly.
Question, uh, on the budget stabilization fund, just curious, how much money is still available in there that was from the traffic lights that could be used for the, um, that?
There's six twenty-five right now, that's the balance in the budget stabilization fund.
From that particular line, I think.
Yes.
And that could be through the economic development plan that you kind of put in the plate, right?
Yes.
It's not tax, that's, that's the non-tax, okay, just curious.
Correct.
When we take money, I know this is kind of off track a little bit here, but we take money out of that fund? I mean, how do we specify if we're gonna?
Whether it's coming from the non-tax revenue or from the?
Spend tax revenue.
Yes.
Spend tax revenue money first.
Always the tax revenue money first, that's where you, okay.
Also, something I think that's important to, to note, uh, I, 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 I briefly mentioned it when talking about the planning document. Our two thousand fourteen budget, uh, was structured on us receiving five point eight million in tax revenue, um, in two thousand fourteen, which, as you can see, is about a quarter of a million dollar, no, three hundred and fifty million dollars less, or, sorry, three hundred and twenty-six million dollars less than what we collect. Million, oh, a million would be beautiful. That would be awesome.
We'd have a whole different planning document.
Yes, we would, we would. We're gonna paint those signposts with the gold paint like Notre Dame does, the helmets, the gold flag paint.
Be the drunken sailors.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Jeff, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, uh, less than what we had collected in tax revenue last year. So, again, just emphasize, we try to structure the budget, the concept of, um, be conservative on what we anticipate in revenue, be, um, you know, uh, very, uh, try, try to be. Accurate on, on, on what we're doing as far as expenditures, if not a little above.
Any other questions? Committee members, any comments or concerns with this, we'll say request. Thumbs up. Okay. Other items, we've already covered the income tax collections, or we need to, need further on that?
Speaks for itself. Anybody needs explanation, probably should resign.
Alrighty. Okay, we, uh, have another request for executive session, do you want this before or after council meeting?
We actually tonight have three separate items to have an executive session. One being the personnel discussion, two being collective bargaining update, three being economic development, uh, agreement, um, conversation. So I'm not sure we're gonna get all three in before seven thirty.
We can, caucus only needs like five minutes, something like that, so if you want to do one of them, do one of them now, and see where, how far that gets.
You want caucus now, and, and then we'll go into executive session?
Yeah, we could do that, caucus now, then we have it out of the way, and then we could go right up to starting the other.
Anything else for finance committee?
Good idea, keep us going that way.
Anything else for finance? Okay, we're adjourned in finance at seven oh five.
When did we start that?
Six forty-seven.
On caucus, all right, uh, before we start that, in your packet of stuff, you should have had a. The, uh, ethics? Stuff. Lynn wants you to make sure that on the very back, your address and all your information is correct, because she will send that in. So everyone, Keith, you know, everyone that's listed on here, just make sure.
You mark it off and give them a clue.
I'll go through real quick, Keith, is your stuff correct?
I didn't look at it.
Seven, seven twenty South Second Street, okay. Uh, Deb, is yours right, seven thirty-five? Jeff, is yours right, thirteen fifty-seven? Uh, Doug, is yours right, four eighty-four? Uh, Cletus, is yours right? Okay, Mary, Mary's not here. Brian, yours is right, mine's right, and, uh, Dick, is yours right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll tell her everything's right there, that's all, and then you'll have to do the online filing like you did last year, and stuff, so. But she just wanted me to make sure everyone's right, so she has to send that in to make sure that. I think she sends that in so then they know who we're supposed to send a, a form in, so if, you know, if she finalizes that, some people have to send an ethics form in, and they don't get one from one of you people, then they're gonna come notify you.
I'll have you know that they can charge you a hundred dollars a day if you miss the deadline. I, I was in peril in that vein myself one year, and, uh, Lynn said she put them in our folders, and mine somehow didn't end up there, and I didn't complete it, and they came kind of looking for them.
Mary, is your information correct on the back of that ethics thing, your address? I gotta tell Lynn's if all of them are right.
Your name's spelled right, and everything's right, okay.
All right, Sarah was correct, okay. All right, that's it. Uh, invocation tonight is done by Mr. Henry. All we have is introduction of ordinances, ordinance two, two thousand and fourteen, which is the codified ordinances, right, I mean, the. Uh, do we need to waive that or anything, or just let it go through a normal process? Just let it go through, yes. Okay, so we'll just read it, then there's no other readings or anything, so we go to the reports. So if everyone does a real short.
I'm gonna do it short.
Short minutes, and are not, you know, your meetings and stuff, we get done quick, just because we're definitely gonna have to go back in executive session after, so. We'll run the, we could then the meeting in like, uh, I'm figuring fourteen minutes and thirty seconds. New record, we're gonna go for tonight.
Okay, so with that, I can go into executive session for, uh, purposes of personnel collective bargaining.
Shut it door.
David, we were gonna ask this question, do we have to have three separate executive sessions on those three separate topics? We just have one vote, Bill?
He made the motion, who seconded?
You did.
Do we have to have three or just one?
Just one.
Just one.
Just one or, okay. Or someone got that written down, who did it? You seconded, right?
Who made the motion?
Jeff made it.
Mark, why don't we do the personnel one last?